Good evening. Welcome to a special meeting of the Buchanan City Commission. It's Tuesday, December 27th at 7:00. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Dennison?
Here.
Whedon?
Here.
Bianski?
Yep.
Money?
Present.
Swem? You have a quorum.
Thank you. I would move to excuse Commissioner Patrick Swem's absence from tonight's meeting.
I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Can I ask a question about this first?
Sure.
Please.
It used to be that we always did it at the meeting after the fact, simply because of, we didn't really want to disclose that they were actually out of town or anything.
We didn't?
Well, I know. I know. But that was the reason why I raised the argument before. And, you know, is there any chance, like with Mark and I, I was trying, I was fully intending on trying to come back for the tail end of the meeting, so I just wanted some clarity on why we're excusing at the meeting and not the following meeting?
No reason. It's in the commission's discretion. You can wait to do the motion or do it now. It's up to you.
Well, I didn't know if there's anything in Robert's rules or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. I just wanted to... Thank you.
Dennison?
Yeah.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. Someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Money. I would move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
I'll support.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open it for public comment. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium. State your name for the minutes. Anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Come on, Beth. Don't be afraid.
Hi, I'm Peter Leacy at 201 Moccasin. I'm a member of the Preservation Society, and tonight you're going to be talking, Kurt Garner is going to be presenting his preservation plan to the commission, which I hope the, we, we, the Preservation Society, hopes the commission will accept, endorse, embrace, and move on to next steps, implementation steps. You know, it's, it's a good plan. We've worked with Kurt, and Kurt's a real asset. He can get this stuff done, so it's our opportunity, and we hope you agree and pursue it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Someone would like to make a motion to approve?
Shawna, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Thank you. Is there support?
This is Money. I'll support.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Bianski?
Yep. Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. Now we can move on to scheduled matters from the floor.
So I'm going to start the Zoom meeting here. Those of you who want to join us? What's that? There we go. So in theory, they should be popping on shortly here. Not sure why they're not jumping on. We'll give them another minute, and if they don't jump on, we could perhaps come back to the site then.
Sure.
I know one of them's trying to connect from Washington DC, so hopefully he's not encountering any technical difficulties.
Is there, where, where do they live? Do they live in Kalamazoo, or do they live in Lansing?
I'm honestly not sure. Well, perhaps we could move to Friends of the Trail update, and I'll continue to try to get this and let you know if they're popping on. Apologies.
We're going to fast forward to Mr. Flinner.
Jerry Flinner, Chairman of the McCoy Creek Trail Board. On December 14th, three members of the Buchanan McCoy Creek Trail Board went to Lansing to Michigan National Resources Trust Fund Meeting, where they were awarding grants for trail extensions, a lot of boat-type things, river-type things, but anyhow, three of us went up there. There were 100 grant requests. Scoring for that was all the way from, I think the highest was like 430, to the lowest of like in the mid 250s. So we were pretty excited that out of 100 applicants, we were number three. We scored 410. And at that point, I've got to step back, because the gentleman behind me, Mr. Murphy, submitted, between him and Susanna from Whitman, did most of the work on the grant, writing of the grant. And when we submitted it originally, our score was 350. The two of them took a look at it, went over it, and went, wait a minute, we're missing quite a few points for things that we should have gotten credit for. They redid the request, and the low score that got a grant was 355. We were at 350 without what Rich Murphy did for the citizens of Buchanan, McCoy Creek Trail, and the city of Buchanan. So if I could, I'd like to give him a standing ovation. Without him, we would have been right on the border. Could have got in, could have got out. We really don't know, but again, we came in third out of 100, so it was very good. At that meeting, they also, and this is kind of a preference for next year, at that meeting, they awarded $25 million in grants. Next year, they're going to award 65 million in grants. So the chairman, as we were walking out, got ahold of us and said, your project, because we're going to attach to the Indiana-Michigan Trail, will then go from Michigan to Indiana, which is a big boost in their scoring system. So they highly encouraged us to go after Phase Two next year, so look out, here we come. Any questions? That's basically my report. We were, we're now complete on the amount of money we need to take the trail out to River St. Joe. We will start in the spring. They're working on design engineering as we speak, and soon as good weather hits, we'll, we'll be going, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
Great job, Carrie. Thank you. And Rich.
I just want to say that that is, you're a continued testament, you and Rich Murphy, to what is possible. If, if hard work and diligence is put into grant applications and, and really drawing the picture for individuals who are not from this area, and why it's important to do that, and to win number three out of 100, and to the magnitude that you've won.
Yeah. We were pretty excited to sit there, where everybody else was kind of sitting there sweating, wondering if they're in or out, and we, we sat there. We knew we were in, but we did go up and accept the awards.
That's fantastic, and I, I also went to a recent meeting up in Stevensville, and that was on the topic of their discussion as well. So it is multiple cities who are consciously aware of the importance of this trail and where it's going.
One next year is called Sparks. You're probably aware of that, and again, they have $65 million, so let's get our piece of the pie. Thank you.
Thank you.
So can you gentlemen hear us? You can hear us? Okay, you're coming in and out a little bit, but I could kind of hear you there. So I'm going to turn the screen here. Hopefully, it'll be a little louder this time. Are you still there?
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
If you can still hear us, Mike, you can go ahead.
I can see them. I don't know, can you hear me?
We can.
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, I'm not hearing the mayor, so I'm not hearing any of the council members. So I'm just, I can see them trying to move their mouths, but I can't see them actually say anything. So I'm assuming we're at items C, 1, A, is that correct, Heather?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Yep, that's correct.
Tonight, I think, there's several items. First is a culvert evaluation agreement. Our company likes to deal with professional service agreements, just to have every project, kind of the county department, ice, dot, and cheese cross. So this was a project that I met Commissioner Money out in the site, DPW and such, and a couple other board members, and looked at the DPW culvert to have that evaluated. Motion made at the meeting down there to have us proceed by doing a culvert evaluation, and since then, we've actually done that and submitted the reports to the city. So this is actually just backtracking a little bit to execute a professional service agreement for that work.
All right, did you guys want to address them one at a time, or have Mike go through all of them?
I'm curious, can I ask him a question about the culvert? Does he, can he give us a quick wrap-up of what they found with that culvert?
Sure. The culvert was found in good condition. There is a little bit of erosion happening at the wing wall. Nothing of any concern immediately. Then it just should be monitored periodically, and then there needs to be some type of action done at some point in the future, route could be added to help stop the erosion, but the erosion currently is not any concern on the one particular wing wall. But the culvert was found in sound shape.
Which culvert is this?
The one that you got to go over to get back to the dog park.
Yeah, the one over the dog. I don't think the public has this knowledge, do they? I mean, it just says culvert. That's the reason why I asked.
Okay.
As long as we're on the topic, I'd like to know where you live, sir.
Where do I live?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I live in Kalamazoo, Michigan.
Okay, because our Zoom doesn't seem to work very well. That's why I questioned that.
Well, right now, I'm in, I apologize. I'm in Annapolis, Maryland. I'm Christmas Greg with the family.
Well, thanks for taking your time to be here. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Mike.
You want to just move on to the next one, or do you want us to?
It, it'd be great if we could just take care of them one at a time, if you guys are okay with that, so we don't miss any.
Well, since I was there, I would move to authorize Manager Grace to sign the culvert evaluation agreement as presented.
I'll support. I, I was there that day, too. This was when, and just as kind of a reminder, so this was when there was a hole on top of the culvert, and the water was pouring down, straight down, instead of, we passed the hole, but then Mr. Schwartz was there and wanted to look at, was a little concerned with what was underneath the road, so we were right there on the spot. Cameron and myself and Commissioner Money told him to go ahead and do what he needed to do to get somebody to look at it, so.
How much is it going to cost?
I believe it was $2,200 or something like that.
Do you have the cost right in front of you, Mike?
I believe it was $3,000, actually, $3,000, and I think it came in right around that number.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Can we have a roll call, please?
Money?
Yes.
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, we're on to the front street and traffic signal.
Thank you very much. So this one is a project that kind of circulated after the USDA project was kicked off. The discussion was, your commissioner, our previous manager, submitted a couple of patients for MDOT funding, and one was for the Front Street-Oak Street intersection light, to have those changed out to represent more like the Red Bud light down there. So Bill Marks had submitted an application through NACS to get federal funding associated with that. So the city has secured federal funding for construction, and so that has also been being rolled into, in essence, the USDA project. That is a, but still a standalone project through the local agency program, through the NACS program. And so the proposal in front of you that was submitted several months ago, but not the agenda for today, is to actually do the design services for the traffic intersection lights for that intersection.
He's been working on this quite a while. I mean, Bill, I think, was working on this when I was commissioner the last time.
Yeah, I was going to ask, can you tell us when he submitted that? I know it was like 2016 or '17?
It wasn't that early. I honestly do not know the date of his middle, what Bill Marks did on that.
It was a long time ago.
It was a very long time ago, because I know it was screwed up and broke at one time. Mike might remember when it was broke, because I think that's when the whole application process started. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And NACS goes in three-year cycles, so you can submit something and may not hear about anything for quite some time.
Okay.
It's just how that whole program works through a federal planning organization.
Just trying to get my head wrapped around how this does work.
Yeah, NACS is a, is a local agency program. Everything is followed through MDOT, so it has to meet the MDOT requirements for paperwork, bidding, et cetera, and the project will be bid through MDOT. And the project is slated to go into them for plan review at some point in January, and then we'll have an MDOT review in March, and that project is slated to go out for bid some point in June, some 23.
You had said this is part of the larger USDA project downtown, but it, but it's also separate? Will the work be, will the work be done at one time?
It is a separate project. It was not part of the original USDA project when that was put together through USDA. So it was actually, in essence, it's being, the USDA project is being split into a couple contracts within downtown, and so one is being part of this MDOT contract for Front Street, and of that, this traffic light is also being added into that to, related to the NACS funding that's being obtained by the city.
But the work will be done when the other project's done, not separately?
Correct, but there is a chance that there will be two separate contractors. There will be two separate contracts for this whole downtown. And the MDOT project, including the traffic light, will be Front Street, almost exclusively Front Street. So there's actually two MDOT job numbers, so MDOT includes the project as two projects because it's a separate funding. So you have a Front Street funding that's going from Red Bud to Front Street, and then you have a traffic light MDOT number that's covered purely in the traffic light item associated with that.
Have you dealt with projects like this?
...as a single contract through MDOT. But it still will cover the balance of the work, because food, water, and sewer is also being detached with the rural development project for the downtown. So USDA is reviewing it. We'll be paying part of that for MDOT, and we'll be paying for the other portion. So MDOT parts are a little more complicated, how funding works through that whole process.
I'm sure you've dealt with big projects with multiple contractors. Is there usually a problem with one having a hindrance or a problem with the other contractor?
There's always a slim chance of that, and there's also the possibility we get defects in contractors. So we're just working on the progress clause to make sure the two contracts work seamlessly together for the storm and sanitary, and the contractors know what to expect from the other contractors, assuming they're separate contractors.
All right. Is that your headache, or is that our headache? Is that your headache or our headache?
That would be our headache.
Okay.
Any other questions for him?
This has been something that's been going on for a long time, quite a while.
It has. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve Engineering Change Order Number One.
This one would be for the, authorize me to sign the Front Street and Oak Traffic Signal Agreement as presented.
Yeah, I will make the motion to authorize Manager Grace to sign the Front and Oak Street Traffic Signal Agreement as presented.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is Money. I support.
Can we have a roll call?
Dennison?
Yes.
Whedon?
Yes.
Bianski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Carrie.
So that one passed, Mike. We're on to the change order number one.
Yes. So there's an amendment, we can do anything amended, amend it to be change order one and change order two if they're all both the same engineering agreements items.
They're listed as separate items.
Okay, so we'll do amendment number one. So amendment number one is, with this original USDA project was put together, there was a list of schedules along with scope of services put into this, along with an engineering contract. Since then, there's been some revisions to the project, and it was broken down into five different sections for the project. The first one is primarily landscaping modifications that include, that added such as retaining walls, fire pits, arches, in place making and extending to downtown area, along with some other street skate items. The second area is associated with the flume at the wastewater treatment plant that turns up the flume connection. We work with Phil, and that, that is the original wastewater treatment plant, and that needs to be replaced and was not done as part of the oxidation engine. So that one's, is also being modified, and we're working with the stamp right now to confirm the final design and include that. The third item was presented as lead services outside the right-of-way, which is not even an USDA-approved item. So that one is working through the lead services during the construction aspect of that. The fourth is dealing with Ryanirson for what the modification that would look like related to the design associated with that. And the fifth item was the inflation area cost for moving the project, in essence, from 22 and 23, which had the original schedule, into 24 and 25. So that is the five items that were outlined into the engineering contract amendment number one.
What is Ryanirson on that?
I'm not sure. Can you, can you explain the lead line thing a little more?
Can I, I'm sorry, what was that, Mayor?
Can you explain the lead line that you were talking about?
The lead line?
Correct.
Okay, I'm, you're, you're a little hard in here.
Sorry.
The lead line. So the lead line is Scott's, prior to him leaving, the city had a plan grant, and they've been working on identifying lead services.
Yeah, I'm just curious how it, how that interacts with the, the downtown project.
So it's been identified through Scott that lead services will be encountered through that area, and so outside of the right-of-ways, we, if you run into a galvanized slash lead service, we have to extend that all the way through the house. So we cannot stop lead services at the property line right-of-way. So anytime you run across this during construction, the contractor will require to coordinate along with us to have a new service installed inside the house, all the way from the, the new water mains.
So does the property owner have any, any responsibilities there, or is that all going to be USDA project money?
It will be partially USDA, and part of it will have to be come through local funding. So the up-to-the-right-of-way point will be, can be paid through the rural development USDA. Apart from the city side, meaning the right-of-way line into the house, will have to come from the city side.
But that's something we're required to do.
Cannot be caught outside the right-of-way.
There's basically no way around it based on recent updates to the way Eagle wants us to handle the situation.
Well, I'm just curious, I remember, and it might have been, it might have been Mike, actually, who said something at one of our meetings about, this happened in a town recently, and after they got everything tore up, the property owners were told that they had to pay for some of the, the new lines, and it was a big surprise to some people, and I want to make sure that doesn't happen, that there's no surprises.
That wasn't from me. I think there was an email or something associated with that from another city. I forget if it was, and I'm drawing a blank, but it was not one of our projects, it was like Hawha or something like that. I recall an email saying something like that, that I had no knowledge of that type of situation.
Well, the taxpayers do pay this, so everybody's paying this.
Everybody will end up paying for that.
Yeah, this is the Flint debacle.
It's a relatively new requirement from Eagle that it's part of the new lead service replacement. It's, you have 20 years to replace all your water, all your...
This goes back to Schneider and Flint.
That's exactly where it goes back to.
I just want to remind everybody where this garbage is coming from.
So do we have a dollar amount with all these change orders, or?
There was a memo presented, lead service, with the estimating cost of the items. Lead services that were added into the project were estimated to be, with Scott, from Scott, come up to about a half million dollars, was anticipated to be from the right-of-way to, through the house for lead services, and that was expected to be around 100. I forget what Scott, I have an email or something from Scott that gave us a number of how many services he expected to run across our project.
How about the other four? What did they add up to?
The construction, the... I don't have those numbers in front of me. I think as a change order, the landscaping increases is, I want to say about 1.6, 1.7?
Million.
Add it to the concrete roads, the fire pits, and everything added onto that increased that. The flume, I think is, I mean, I would be, I'd be speculating, so I won't try to guess on the flume. The number in my back of my head is 100,000, but I honestly don't remember what the whole flume wastewater treatment plant number is.
You mentioned Ryanirson. Is Ryanirson, I mean, we're not closing off Ryanirson, so is that anything special? Is that, was that part of this, or why did you mention Ryanirson in this?
Yeah, Ryanirson's a pretty very small portion of this dollar amount. It was basically for additional survey to go up Ryanirson, re-modifying the sidewalk up through there, turning it up to the gas station to a two-way, so that way if it does close, it will be at a point of a dead end, where it puts bricklayers up Ryanirson, and redoing the curb, and then also that cross street. I've heard seen many names for that, whether it's Johnson Ford or something like that, and the final, final name is that little Johnson Ford to have that redone.
Yeah, but I think the final decision was not to close Ryanirson.
That's correct, and this doesn't do that.
Then we had several meetings on the closure discussion and presentation option. The council about three months ago, I think, we made a formal decision to not close Ryan Nielsen.
Right. Anybody else have any questions?
Where are we going to get the money?
The only place to get the money for the lead service line is through the, um, increase of water sewer rates if needed. Uh, we won't know until the project's completed what that might look like because we're only guessing at how many lead service lines we'll encounter. We really don't know until the project is underway. But it's one of those things that because of state law, we have no choice. It's, it's a requirement that we cannot avoid. So there, there's no way around it, um, and legally that's the way to pay for it unless this body were to make some sort of a decision to try to pursue special assessments or something to that degree. But it's my understanding that based on, um, Mayor's spec, uh, statement there that we would likely not do that. So it would likely just come in the form of, of being subsidized through general rate increases.
Well, Heather, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot here because I've always asked these kind of questions before. They make these rules and laws and lancing and then we're expected, but they don't cough up any money.
They do not typically.
At all. So are they going to take Buchanan? Are they going to foreclose on Buchanan if we don't comply? I mean, we have to replace our sewer lines.
If we don't comply, we won't get any of the USDA funding. We won't have any money for the entire project.
That's federal funding, right? So the federal government and the state governments tied together?
They, they make sure that we follow state requirements or they won't give us the funding.
Yeah, I could have a field day with this. Thank you, Heather.
Any other questions for Mike? Anybody like to make a motion for change order number one?
Sean, I'll make a motion to authorize Manager Grace to sign Engineering Change Order Number One Agreement.
Thank you. Is there support?
No support.
Madison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Yaski?
Yes.
Yes.
Pretty confident, yes. Okay. Hit us with number two.
Uh, it's just, well, I'm sorry to keep you busy tonight. This is a, this is a rough meeting, but, uh, hopefully you guys, guys can still hear me. So we've been going through the MDOT process of Front Street and it's been brought to our attention that, um, the right away on the, the building, I guess we'll phrase it, the buildings on the north side of Front Street are five feet up from the right away. So if you think about it, the right away is sixty-six foot on Front Street. The buildings are seventy-one feet face to face. So there's a five-foot gap. All the buildings on the south side are right on the right away line. All the buildings on the north side are five feet. So there's a five-foot gap in there that unless we obtain easements from, we cannot replace the sidewalk, do landscaping, install any utilities or anything associated with that. And MDOT has a very defined process of how to obtain, um, easements and the process to go through that. So change order two is, is to go through that process for nineteen parcels, uh, associated with about fourteen parcels, our property owners to secure easements for, um, the work that's being funded through MDOT.
So basically another example of the state requiring something before we're eligible for the money we need for the project.
And what's the price tag on this one?
Did you hear that, Mike?
I did, I did not hear that.
Mayor was inquiring as to the price for this change order.
Bear with me for a second. Let me see if I can pull that up. Mike, I have it right here. Would you like me to? Sure, sure, Jason, thank you. I, I don't have that running.
Can you give us a rough idea?
Also for property lots, I've got that change order in front of me. The total amount for professional services needed to acquire those easements is fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. Um, and then there's some items that we pay directly by the city that, um, such as, um, recording fees, title search fees. Uh, we don't actually know those until interactions, uh, that services provided, so, um, much, much smaller dollar amount, but, um, those are direct expenses and we don't know the exact cost.
It's one of those things.
Yeah, it's a catch twenty-two because if we don't do it, we can't pursue the MDOT funding, so.
It's ridiculous.
This is the epitome of blank checks. I'll make the motion to authorize Manager Grace to sign Engineering Change Order Number Two Agreement as presented.
Is there support?
Sorry, taxpayers.
This is money, I'll support it.
Can we roll call please?
Weeden?
Yes.
Yaski?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Yes.
This is in direct relation when you wait to do something.
Yes.
Just so you know. This is what happens when the government decides to try to save you money upfront instead of spreading it out over a long period of time, so Merry Christmas.
Did the commission have any further questions of the gentleman in prime in the new house?
I don't. Do you guys?
Thank you guys very much for joining us while you're on vacation though. I really appreciate it.
Please don't come up with any more surprises at cost.
Actually, these were surprises.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Heather.
Okay. So, all right, so we're past the engineering changes. We've heard from the friends of the trail. Let's move to, uh, reports from, uh, Community Development Director, Mr. Murphy.
Evening, Commissioner. Uh, Rich Murphy, Community Development Director. Uh, first item up is a, uh, renewal for the Zen Leaf at two five nine East Front Street for their medical marijuana and adult use retail permits. Um, I have received their annual renewal application. I find it to be in good order. Uh, we have received their paid fees and my recommendation is to approve.
Sean, I'll make a motion to approve the medical and adult use retail permit renewals for Zen Leaf at two fifty-nine Front Street.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Can we roll call please?
Yaski?
Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Kerry.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, next item is Blackbird, uh, Alcorn Valley Renewal. Uh, this is for a grower class C marijuana permit at four oh two to four oh four South Oak. Uh, once again, I have received their application, uh, for renewal for the grow permit. Find it to be in good order and, uh, my recommendation is to, uh, approve the renewal.
I'm just curious where you guys are at on operations. Are you guys?
I have a whole little speech we'd like to hear.
I'm okay with you there.
I was going to mention that, uh, Rhett Johnson is here for.
Sorry to me to call you. I know you're here.
I was going to tell you everything that's happened since the beginning.
I'm ready.
If there's time for it.
Yeah, let's do it. I authorize it for whatever, whatever power I've got.
Is it five minutes?
Three.
Uh, you guys want to decide for me, please?
Go ahead.
Your choice. Okay.
I'll give him some of my time if that's necessary.
Hello all. My name is Rhett Johnson. My partner and I purchased and have been renovating four oh two, four oh four, and four oh eight Oak Street, right here in Buchanan. This is the first real estate that I've ever owned and I couldn't feel more hopeful what's, for what's to come. For a year now, I've been living and breathing this project and this town. As the seasons were changing, I was pouring concrete, building walls, hanging drywall, designing my own equipment, retrofitting and reviving my space. Entering inside my buildings, the difference is night and day. I've been completing all of the work with my two hands and I'm proud of what I've accomplished. Ceilings have been reinforced, huge beams have been hung, power's been run, upgrades to all of the utilities, the works. In the very near future, my vision will come to life. I'm here before you tonight to share my enthusiasm for what's coming to Buchanan. I'm just a few short strides away from seeing my vision come to life. Along the process, there have been some challenges and with those challenges have brought opportunities to learn from my mistakes. I came to Buchanan with a dream and that dream is still alive and well. I've studied the market and what's available throughout town and beyond. I can't wait to show everybody what I can do. True craft, true individual offerings that exist nowhere else on this earth, in any gardens or shops. Since the initial plan approval and after purchasing the real estate, I've honed my designs. I've hired and worked alongside a local architect and his engineer, making considerable investments to the structures found at the property. Indiana Michigan Power graciously upgraded our utilities of the street and our CT cabinet after months of planning and calling. I stood outside and photographed the boom truck working on the pole smiling ear to ear. A local electrical firm worked alongside of me for the better part of a year. There were many delays from supply chain issues caused by unforeseen geopolitical events coupled with the already slowed supply from the COVID-19 pandemic. My six hundred amp electrical panel arrived six months late. It's the heart of my building. When it came, it felt better than Christmas. My issues unfortunately didn't end there. Again, when looking to purchase HVAC equipment, there were more delays, some being a year out or longer. Seeking solutions out, my architect introduced us to a friend of his who had equipment for sale. We were told that we were purchasing brand new industrial hospital-grade equipment. The deposit was paid, we bated anxiously for the equipment to arrive. In the meantime, I brought in a whole cement truck and poured pads for the new state-of-the-art equipment I'd been dreaming of. They didn't show. This delayed my electrical inspection and was starting to negatively impact morale. Finally, in a stroke of some luck, the equipment began to arrive. Many accommodations were made specifically in, in anticipation for this specific equipment and its design. A small fortune later, it was onsite and once again, I felt progress being made. I had noticed immediately that the equipment looked a little rougher than what I had been imagining and dreaming of. I was assured that the units were new and the imperfections were nothing to worry about. This was, after all, state-of-the-art, hospital-grade, sterile equipment from a reputable brand that we're talking about here. I was still skeptical. For my flowering rooms, there are two twenty-ton compressors for each that sit outside feeding two ten-ton blowers. The large compressors appeared to be as promised and were wired up without incident. The matching dual blowers for the units, all four of them, required different voltage power than anything else on the property. This is a disappointing discovery. In order to power the units, I now had needed to hand mix more cement, pour new pads, set the outdoor rated transformers I would be needing, and order new transformers to neck down the voltage, starting from, starting the supply chain game over again. Each transformer would now require two additional disconnects for the power differing voltages. This added a tremendous amount of cost as well as time itself. Patiently, I waited once again for the right equipment to arrive and they did. Now with the newly installed electrical gizmos, it came time to charge the units for refrigerant. It was brought to my attention that after all of this, my new ten-ton blower units that run on special juice were in fact new, but they were new since the year two thousand and eight. The trouble with blowers made in two thousand and eight is they run on a refrigerant that no, is no longer sold. It runs on R twenty-two. My compressor, the driver of these blowers, the big units outside, run on four-ten A, which is a newer gas that's found in the majority of modern systems. Four-ten A systems run at roughly a hundred and thirty pounds per inch, per square inch rather, through its evaporator cores compared to about seventy PSI for the older refrigerant, R twenty-two. R twenty-two units were never designed to operate at the higher pressures required for the more modern four-ten A systems. Anyways, I didn't mean to stand here and complain because I really don't. So that was the it for everything that I wrote. The rest of it's just from the heart. I'm super pleased to be here. I couldn't be more excited about my project. I've had even more pitfalls than that. Unfortunately, this, this past year throughout all of that, I had lost my mother. A lot of things had happened. It just didn't all go to plan. It hasn't been all roses, but I'm still here. I'm closer than ever. I think I've solved all of those issues and they should be complete soon. I plan to hit the ground running and when I do, I'm really excited for it. The only other pitfalls that I've, that I wanted to share with you guys and not that I'm looking for anyone to do anything about it, but I had noticed the only other thing that, that has me a little trepidatious about it is the consolidation of all the different shops downtown have been kind of being bought by larger entities. And it's just, I aspire to just to be an independent operator. I always have been. I want to just have my own little fiefdom and that, that's it. I don't need to go out and conquer other markets. We don't need to move to other states. I would like very much to just be here in Buchanan and I would love for there to be a way for me to bend here myself directly and vertically integrate my business. But that's for another day. I'm just here to ask you, please let me keep building my building. I'm almost there. I'm doing a great job and also I'd like to invite you guys to come see it if you'd like. It's right up the road, anytime you like.
Are you up there every day?
Pretty much, yeah.
I'll drop by. I'd be manning too. I'd go come by though. It's going to have to get warmer, but we only got to wait two days, so.
That's right. That's what I hear.
I'll be out there on a fifty-degree there. It's easier for me to move around.
I love that, yeah. I'll leave, um, my phone number.
Yeah, if you would, that'd be, that'd even be better.
Sure.
I'll make the motion to.
Go ahead. Read it.
I move to approve the grower class C permit renewal for Blackbird. We have four oh two, four oh four, South Oak.
Thank you. Is there support?
No support.
Can we roll call please?
Money?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Yaski?
Yes.
Kerry.
You guys are the best. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhett. You're going to be successful because you have a killer attitude.
Definitely leave your phone number for me.
The American dream is alive and well. I mean that from the heart and, you know, I, we, we have such good, um, relationships with all our operators. I know there's a couple here tonight, uh, but they've been, they participate in, uh, community activities. In, in Rhett's case, he's actually been in a few, uh, video, marketing videos that we've done, uh, to market, uh, downtown Buchanan and events. And, um, so, uh, you know, I wish you well and we'll, uh, continue to see your dream come true, I hope. Thank you. Um, next item is, uh, facade grant request for Stark School. Um, I have given you guys a detail up there, uh, you need to review. Um, there are improvements to windows and signage that were made to five oh two Clermont Street. And, um, I find that the application is in good order, uh, and that, uh, I recommend a total, a grant payment at this time of sixty percent of what the submitted paid invoices, which results in a total of five thousand, seven dollars and two cents. And, uh, the, uh, principal of the project, Jen, Jen Taber is here this evening, in case you guys have any questions. Uh, but my recommendation is for approval.
Anybody have any questions?
I'll wait till after a motion's made.
Anybody want to make a motion?
This is money. I would move to approve the, uh, excuse me, Stark School facade grant for five oh two Clermont as presented.
Give me a second.
Thank you.
Questions?
Yeah. Um, how much money do we still have in the Economic Development Fund?
We prepared a, um.
Rich is getting used to me.
I see. I like it though.
Twenty-two, uh, Buchanan Grants.
Catching on.
Award summary. Thought this question might come up.
Thank you.
Look at that, Rich. Man, ever more proud of you every day, buddy.
And, um, so this has all the grants that we approved in two thousand one and two thousand two, uh, facade grants, restaurant grants, technical assistance grants. When, remember when we launched in two thousand twenty-one? I don't, I think we're three quarters through the year. Um, so we're just getting started, but if you look at two thousand twenty-two. I mean, we're pretty. The grants program are working as, as I envisioned. And you can ask the people that have applied for them and, uh, I think that they will echo that sentiment that they made these improvements or took a leap of faith because the city had this grant program here. Um, when I pitched the original economic development, uh, strategy, uh, I asked for ninety thousand dollars per fiscal year for grants. And I was envisioning facade, restaurant, techno, technical assistance, and perhaps, um, upper story residential and rear facade grants that I, I right now have drafts of that to launch. So I really feel like we're in a good position and we have budgeted correctly, uh, with, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over two fiscal years. Uh, so far, we've spent less than that, but you know, with grants, um, you know, you got to get the word out, you market it. Um, two thousand twenty-one, we had close to thirty thousand dollars in grants. Two thousand twenty-two, we had close to seventy thousand, you know? Um, I, I expect next year, uh, you know, we might open up some upper story, uh, residential and, uh, the rear facade grants. And so I, I think we're very much on target to what was budgeted, to what you guys approved and, you know, I'm feeling good about where we are, so.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other questions on that? So, uh.
We got it.
Okay, sorry.
Madison?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Yaski?
Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Kerry.
Yes.
I thought he was gonna change his mind there for a minute.
Okay.
Jen was staring at me.
You know what? I wanna give a brief update just to let you guys know, because I know you ask on occasion about Michigana Farm. This was the 302 Post Road business. Again, we've heard a lot of the challenges of, you know, let alone a new burgeoning industry and taking this risk, but then, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, there were challenges, there were supply chain issues, there were labor shortages, there were, you know, a lot of things that new businesses had to deal with. This business in particular had a reorganization of principals. I did recently sit down with them for about an hour here at City Hall, Mike Shamrock and Peter Shannon, who is the new principal of Michigana Farm. They indicated a strong willingness to move forward with their grow facility project. And they understand that there's been a delay, but I wanna bring them forward for an update on their project, perhaps at one of the next meetings, maybe next meeting or the following, and then the consideration of their renewal. We have people that wanna do business in the city. We have available cannabis permits, so they're not taking anybody else's permit right now. They're paying us money, and they're showing up to help me update me on their project. So I feel like they deserve an update and a consideration for renewal, so I will be in touch with you guys on that.
Is that the gray building on Post Road?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I got one other question. Rich, well, I got you up here. It's kind of off, but it's not, because you authorize it. The $50,000 that we paid to redo the zoning ordinances, $30,000 of that was supposed to come from a grant. Where are we at on that grant? Because I think the city commission only authorized $20,000.
That is, I don't have an ex...
It's still pending with MEDC. We have not yet been awarded that grant, so we're still waiting to hear where they're at with that.
So what happens if we don't get that grant? We have to pay the $50,000?
Correct.
Thank you, Rich.
But we do have a soft yes already from them on it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, grants update. Thank you, Jerry, for that update. And, you know, I gotta say, it's been such a pleasure working with Jerry. He's a legend, by the way. And, you know, the other people that are on this team, we've been working, it's been over a year. I mean, we started on this when I got to Buchanan. And, I mean, we've had dozens of phone calls, conference calls, where, you know, people have been on vacation and things, but still having these calls to keep it on track. We have Brian Doherty and Fran Tuitt from River St. Joe Brewery, and Susanna Denault from White Men has been amazing. And we're just, we're really trying to change the way that people think about Buchanan in terms of having excellent submittals. We're using a lot of visuals. In fact, in this last grant, we used a video about water in Buchanan. And, you know, so much of the Andrews work has laid this foundation for the visuals. Visuals win money. And, you know, we see that in the Vision of Buchanan photo model. I mean, it's essentially worth a million dollars, that photo at this point. So one of the things with the grants is, you know, Jerry said he went, they went to Lansing, and that matters. Showing up matters, and talking to the board, changing the way people think about Buchanan. And, you know, to give you one example, we were only getting, I think, 20 points on our quality of natural resources. So it was like fair. And we were thinking like, what are you talking about, fair? We have a trout, a designated trout stream called McCoy's Creek. We have a Baker tongue fin, you know, and this is like the jewel of Marion County, right in our backyard. So we called them, and we're like, well, we have these things. They said, you have to get some testimony. Someone has to testify that, you know, these things are important. So we made some calls and got some letters written testifying to the fact that these are high-quality natural resources from the Southwest Michigan Conservancy and from the Southwest Michigan Plant Commission. By the way, they've been super supportive of us, Brandon Kovenet and Chris Martin. So it's really been a team effort from day one, but, you know, when you change the way, when you're third out of the state, now your application, when Buchanan's application comes in again, they're gonna be like, what does Buchanan have to say this time, you know? And also, that point that we got from 20 to, I think, 50 points, we're always gonna get those now, because we have high-quality natural resources in Buchanan. So it's a process. Jerry mentioned the Spark Grant. We're gonna go out, and we did go after that for this year. It's a two-year process. So I, you know, if we don't get it this year, we have a good shot of getting it next year. So I'll be in touch on that one. But we did submit for the December 19 deadline. Again, these things are labor-intensive, hours of work.
That's the million-dollar one that you applied for, right?
Million-dollar one.
Yes, keep your hands off that, Rich.
So, anyway...
I'm sorry, keep your hands off.
We'll just keep going on the grant. You know, the, I did also get, I'm waiting for official approval from AEP, the power company, that they funded our master plan for the River St. Joe public access. So once that happens, I'll be before you with an engagement request for an engagement letter for Avon Marsh Consulting to lead that project, which will then start putting engineering dollars behind other improvements on the river. That's really what differentiates our applications. We have engineers on our team. When you have engineers on your team, they have real cost estimates and site plans, and then your application starts to come to the top, as well as all the other visual and the vision we create. And I was talking to the mayor earlier. Investment follows vision. That's what happens. It just takes a little bit. Investment doesn't just follow, you know, flavor of the day or what somebody says one day or another, but when somebody's, when a place is really putting their foot down and saying, we have this vision, that's when the investment dollars will come in. And so that's kind of where we are right now.
Can you just share real quick with the public and the rest of the commission about your conversations with AEP and Avon Marsh and how that happened, and how they stepped forward and said they'd pay for it?
Yeah. We, basically, based on the vision, they saw that we had the community behind the project. We had consensus, and we had done a lot of the work. And they basically, Avon Marsh offered to consult on our grant pro bono. So they joined our team. White Men did the same thing for McCoy's Creek. And I think they have stepped forward because they see such a stellar group of resources that are willing to put in the work. Like, no, not just show up to the first meeting, show up to like all 15 meetings over a year and a half, you know, and say, we're actually gonna go after, we're gonna be tenacious. And the same thing with Avon Marsh. I asked AEP, you know, they funded McCoy's Creek last year, AEP, 50 grand, I think they gave us. I asked them if they'd fund the master plan, and they said yes, we're interested in strategic planning. And so they funded the master plan, and then Avon Marsh said they would draft it and do that for us. So it's kind of working out pretty well. Yeah.
You can let Rich go.
Just to back Rich up on that, when we went up to the December 14, again, we weren't in jeopardy because we were set in number three, but the communities that were at the 350 level, there were a number of them that were below 350 that got the grant request because they had made a presence, they had made a presentation. And these other ones, it was just there, and it was just black and white paper. So it does make a difference to be there, it does make a difference. And they encouraged us again next year to come up to one of their meetings before the awards to make our presentation. I mean, it's all about the... Just backing that up.
Yeah, so one day, you're gonna be able to ride your bike from City Hall to River St. Joe Brewery pretty soon.
I just wanna tie into that, and Rich, you know, I've always had great praise for you. It's amazing, because when you hear the naysayers and they say, well, what do we need an Economic Development Director for? How's he gonna pay for himself? What does he do, or what does she do? It doesn't really matter, you know, what gender they are. The bottom line is, is that when I went to another village meeting, and one of the topics, of course, was cannabis, the other one was, well, they had to go out and get another Economic Development Director, and what is that gonna do, or how are they gonna pay for it? And tonight is a testament to the necessity for your position. So I just wanted to say thank you for all of your continued hard work. I'm looking forward to what's more to come, and keep charging forward, man. I really do appreciate it. And, you know, the other topic about cannabis was, it's great because you continue to bring these quality people before us, and you've done your due diligence to ensure that they know the requirements and expectations that we put upon them. And I can tell you the things that I heard at that meeting, and believe it or not, Buchanan was brought up a lot, and I had no intentions of being there just for Buchanan. It was just to speak on the topic of cannabis and what you can do as a city and be successful and have that in your town. And I thought I was back during Dan's era, when he was getting screamed at to approve it. And it was amazing, because it's just a miseducation and a misrepresentation of what the community is. And once they find out that it's hard-working people that go to business meetings and have to deal with financials and to ask for grants and assistance from the city, just let it be known that when they think of Buchanan, they're gonna be begging to come down here and ask us how we did it. Because right now, they're about easily five years behind, and they're not gonna make it up. They're just not gonna do it, and the hard work that everybody's put in, commission and the city involved, from the safety to the city manager. And I want to say this, because it's gonna go into closed session, and most of you are gonna leave. But thank you, once again, for all of your hard work, and I'm looking forward to more of that.
Thanks. Okay, last item. Kurt Garner's here, Peter. I know Peter spoke. I just wanted to frame this a little bit. During Vision of Buchanan, a really important theme rose that Buchanan really cares about their history. And it's really important to the future of Buchanan, to look backwards while we look forwards. We have this very high-quality family of architecture downtown and in our neighborhoods, several national register districts. And, you know, I began to do the research, and I'm like, wow, there is a great deal of amazing work that's been done by the Buchanan Preservation Society. And this is just something that the city really needs to recognize and partner and continue as we look forward. So, you know, Kurt, I've worked with Kurt on many projects, including several national district in my former community, several preservation projects. He's the go-to, I call him the Michael Jordan of national register designations, because he leads probably in the entire nation of amounts of designation. So, anyway, at one point, there was a guy that was, any John Lloyd Wright designation, he wrote, and it was just funded. So, anyway, so he's done a lot of work. I know he appreciates Buchanan. He's also went to Andrews University and was involved in a project that we did in 2007 in Michigan City. He was involved in a vision for Buchanan. He walked the streets with the students and Andrew Von Mar and Heather and the commission and me, and really brought a focus on historic preservation. And so, you know, when Kurt and I were talking, we were like, how can we keep this important historic preservation element alive in our next chapter of redevelopment? And he thought that there's a way to create a preservation plan that would kind of tie everything together, put some visuals in, and set some goals. He would be the conduit to the Preservation Society, show up at their meetings, give an annual, a presentation at their annual meeting, and then periodically give updates to the commission. So he's done that, and that's, he's here tonight just to give a brief update on the preservation plan for City Buchanan.
Well, thank you, thank you, Rich. Rich was looking for another standing ovation. I thought he was gonna get one. I was impressed with that. Thank you, Mayor, commission members, and Rich. I appreciate the time that I've been working here in Buchanan. Actually, lived in Buchanan for a year when I was commuting back and forth to Marion Springs. So, yeah, Rich and I had worked together in the past, and when we began having this conversation, and I mentioned, a preservation plan would kind of make some sense. Lo and behold, Peter and Beth said, hey, we did a preservation plan back in 2012. And so that really became the basis, and we abbreviated much of the work that was going to be done, just based off of having that plan already developed. You don't reinvent the wheel, you know, you just go for it. So if you wanna just go ahead and scroll through, that kind of gives the basis of this. And I gave this presentation at the annual meeting for the Buchanan Preservation Society. It was the end of October, if I'm correct. And this is abbreviated. I think that was a few dozen pages, and I really only pulled out like seven pages. And I know that Rich has that plan and maybe has already forwarded that to you guys. So the table of contents there, that just gives a quick overview of what's in the report. And then the report background talks about how we went back and reviewed the 2012 plan, the documents that were created then, which were really very substantial documents. And then basically just gave almost like a, you know, a health report. Where are you at now with what you said, you know, you were hoping to do in 2012? And that became the basis or the summary for this report. So you already have some national register districts. You have the downtown district, you have the residential district, a really broad district that wraps around the downtown, and you keep going, Rich. And then you have a couple of individual sites, the Zinc Collar Pad Building, which is individually listed. And then, very soon, the Clark Equipment Building, which was the first project that I was brought in on. The Historic Review Board meeting for that, for the State of Michigan, is January 20th, and we're gonna do that here, right? We're gonna zoom in. And so very soon after that, then, the Clark Equipment Complex would be listed on the National Register. And then the report, actually...
Can you just review what those are?
Sure. Well, it's this building, for one, then, you know, the main manufacturing administration building, the building that is, I'm challenged here. That way, right?
Yeah, right here.
The building that's been renovated into the winery facility, and then the small guard shacks, power buildings, or power plant buildings, and then the park. Did I miss any? Those are it. So, yeah, it's actually coming in as a nice little complex of buildings for the National Register, and my first project in Michigan. So I appreciate the fact that you let me do it here in Buchanan. Along with the preservation plan, we kind of talked about what would be kind of pilot projects, the Oak Ridge Cemetery being one, and then also Buchanan Preservation Society mentioned. The Mill Race had been determined to eligible for the National Register in the past, and so both of those, we kind of put forward to the shippo and asked them to make sure that they felt like they were still eligible. We got eligibility determinations back on both of those. So the goal would be in 2023 to move ahead with both of those. And then in the 2012 report, it listed a number of areas that they identified as potential national register districts. And so we kind of created a little bit of a criteria and then bounced it off of BPS as to how, what they felt were priorities. We did a little driving tour. I'm not gonna mention, somebody broke the seat in my daughter's van, but it was a good event. And we got around to all the sites and looked at those, and then I asked them to basically just give me a priority list of what they felt were more important in terms of the district's eligible sites that were to follow. And so we did that, and then based on that, you have your priority list there. Red Bud Days, that residential district on the south side of downtown, came in at number one. Liberty Heights, it possibly, combined with the Claremont Avenue District, would be number two. And then Colonial Gardens, which wasn't identified in the 2012 report, but based on my understanding of what the National Park Service is looking for now in terms of worker housing, that... of what the National Park Service is looking for now in terms of worker housing, that payment at number four. And then number five is the Electrolux, excuse me, Electro Voice Industrial Corridor Complex as, as a very low priority. And that was one that was identified in the 2012 report. So, that's kind of the order that we're presenting in terms of what makes the most sense as we tick through national register districts. Can you go ahead? Something I think would be very successful, to bring attention to those districts as you begin to get those listed, would be an interpretive, kind of historic signage plan. And this was done in the community that, that Rich came from, and I've seen it done in other communities, and it actually becomes something that, it can provide tourism, but there's such a thing as native tourism, and sometimes that is golden. And so I would just recommend that, think about putting a, a plan in place where you actually do interpretive signs at your district boundaries, or if they're individual sites. And then connect it with like a walking trail or a greenway trail, and it can be promoted by BPS. And residents like to know about their history. They, they're not ones necessarily to jump in and open up books and start poring through the library, sorry, Peter, but they do like to, if they're presented with it, you know, as they're walking around the neighborhoods, they do tend to like to stop and read a little bit about their history. The other item is that historic character protection. I think that educating the public, and there's ways that I think both Buchanan Preservation Society and the town can kind of join together on this, where you're educating the, the public about styles and history, and, you know, the, the various aspects of restoration, and why that's important, and why that allows the character to be preserved and celebrated over time. And like Richard said, you've got two really vast districts between the downtown and the residential area. That alone offers a lot of opportunities for people to, to get involved in, in restoration and preservation. So, yeah, we were talking about education and oversight. So, I, I kind of put a charge out to the Buchanan Preservation Society that they could do the, the education kind of side of that with some, some different thoughts, and then, but they don't have any kind of jurisdictional kind of, you know, ability. The city would need to, to come along and look at, what does that mean in terms of oversight? And some of the things that are involved in that, and that goes into that, the larger report, is just, you know, some, some basic things like overlay districts that would allow you to, to say, hey, we think this is important in this area. Typically, they follow national register districts, and how you, how you might encourage preservation in those areas. I'm thrilled that you guys have the SOD program. So many towns do not have that. And that is one of the best tools that you can use to get people to do preservation work in terms of protecting, you know, your community character. So, I think that's it.
Can you just answer the question, why would we want to designate more districts and places of national register?
You want me to go into the financial benefits of that, Rich, or?
Just financial and just telling the story.
Sure. I, there's, I, oftentimes, when I'm contacted to, to do national register nominations, it's, it's for one or two reasons. One reason might be, you know, the community just really wants to celebrate its history, or you have an individual that owns, you know, an impressive building or home, and they just really want that honor that comes along with the national register. Usually, that's, you know, probably more than half the time. That's, that's usually why properties get put on the national register. The other half the time is, it's municipalities that are contacting me, economic development offices, private developers, who understand that there's some benefits, financial benefits that go along with it. And particularly, there's a, a federal tax credit that is for income generating properties. So, this was, I think, part of the catalyst for doing Clark Equipment Complex there. That 20%, I'm doing a $19 million project down in New Albany right now. The 20% is everything to get their, you know, their financial package together. So, think of it as, you know, you have to have every tool in your tool belt. Any economic development director would tell you, you have to have every tool in your tool belt. So, I think that the national register plays a part in that. It doesn't put requirements on anybody unless they decide that they're going to, you know, access those tax credits. So, it's just a simple tool, and, and it's money well-invested by the community to continue on that path. In residential areas, I think it's a matter of, Indiana has a residential tax credit. I don't know that, that Michigan does. We talked about checking into that. But, it's, it's a way to encourage people to understand the value of their property in terms of preservation, history, and then how that affects other people in their neighborhood in terms of restoration. So, it's, it's kind of that rising tide lifts all boats. If, if one person, you know, really gets excited about the aspect of preservation and restoration, it tends to have a, an impact throughout your whole neighborhood. So, I think that national register can play a part of that, part in that. But it also goes back to education. It's, it's not just about oversight in the city. It has to, you know, come from people, and they're, you know, for a small ragtag bunch of people, they, they do a tremendous job here in Buchanan.
Hey, Kurt?
I was very complimentary on that. I didn't, I didn't say that you broke the van seat, did I, though? Yes?
I just want you to clarify, unless you take the tax breaks, you don't have to stick to the standards. I mean, because that's the first question that comes out of people's mouths, because I'm part of the, I think Detroit Street is part of the historical, but I don't really have to go through anything special other than regular zoning ordinances. I don't have to comply, as long as I didn't get any tax credits from Uncle Sam or the state of Michigan.
That's correct. And, and that tax credit process is, it's a process. And, and as a homeowner, you wouldn't be eligible for it anyway.
Okay.
If a landlord would be eligible, because it's an income-producing property. But no, there's, there's no requirements that would go on it. Now, I will say, this kind of goes back to the oversight situation. If there's a way for the, for the city to encourage, even in residential areas, you valuing your historic home and your property, and then giving people tools on how to do that, how best to do preservation, I think that that's a value as well. So, yeah, there's no, there's no rules, there's no, that goes along with it. But, you know, maybe there ought to be some thought about, how do you preserve, you know, the most important neighborhoods that are there in terms of their architecture and their, their history?
Thank you.
Do you have other questions?
I don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you again for, for allowing me to work here in Buchanan. I appreciate it.
No, that's great. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Rich. I think you're doing a hell of a job. Next, the clerk report.
All right, let's start off with the recount. So we had our recount. I don't know, the Niles Daily Star did publish about the recount. Tony was there with me the whole time. Emma, who's hiding over in the corner, is one of the people I brought. So I brought Emma because she's our chair at Precinct Two, and I also brought our chair of AV counting board, and then myself, because I was here at Precinct One. So if there was any questions that we might be able to cover. Precinct One and Two were able to be recounted. The AV counting board was not able to be recounted due to, when you go into a recount, you have to count the ballots first, and they have to match what the tabulator said that night. So you get two out of three tries to match. The people that were recounting did not match multiple times, and I believe it was like four different numbers. Unfortunately, when you do recounts, you open yourself up to human error. Monroe had a chance to challenge it if she wanted to. She declined that because of her votes, and the AV counting board were the second highest. So, after all that said and done, and I was going cross-eyed by the time two o'clock came around, marks still won by one. So, we were, it was intense. I probably will never do a recount when my precincts are being counted again. You can ask Emma over there, and Tony. I was a hot mess. Just, to be completely honest, I could not focus, and I was recounting a whole different precinct for a different jurisdiction. So, it all went well. Unfortunately, human error plays a part in recounts. So, it's never, but tabulators came out with the same number as what was recounted. So, that's all good. I'm going to hit you with some Prop Two stuff, because we are going to have a special election in May. So I am gearing up right now to start prepping as much as possible with all the new state law changes with Prop Two that passed. There's definitely going to be some learning curve, because the state has given us no guidance whatsoever, because they're still doing audits and recounts themselves. With a lot of turnover from the Bureau of Elections in the state of Michigan, let me tell you, there's only eight of them that work. They are down to four people now for the state of Michigan, the whole state of Michigan, for the whole Bureau of Elections. There's eight people. So, there is not a lot of them to go around. They are struggling, and they're doing the best that they can, but yes, we, with these proposals that are written by groups, it doesn't always line up with what maybe is already in law. So the biggest, couple of the biggest things I want to talk to you guys about is because I was at our clerk meeting in December, and it was brought to our attention that it says state or federal elections for early voting, for the eight, nine days of in-person early voting. So that does not include local. So, the clerks and, we're trying to figure out if we are going to do the nine days, and if who is going to do the nine days? Are we going to try and jump on this and kind of do it together and figure it out? And maybe have a test run, because 2023, we are, we're slated to have three elections. We'll have a presidential primary, a regular primary, and then the general. So, my thought is to do the nine days of in-person early voting, so that we have some experience on what we can do better for when the storm comes. But like I said, I'm trying to feel the clerks out, and we have to decide here pretty quick, because our AV applications have to go out in January. So that's another thing. There's a couple other things, like with the extra postage. I looked at it today. It's going to be about $350 in extra postage that we need to add on for every election. So not as bad as what I thought it was going to be. But what scares me is there is a state-funded system to track the absentee voter ballots and the application. It's supposed to be state-funded. I do not know how they're going to roll out a system for us to track everything, and people get notifications for, because that's what it says. They can opt into notifications. And usually, that would be like through the post office. There is something on the Secretary of State's website, kind of like that. You can kind of see, like, if I've got your ballot back, you can double-check. It says that when I received it and what time. Same with the application. That makes me very, that's very nervous, because I don't know how we're going to do that. And it might be something, it's in law now. If the state doesn't have something by then, I'm going to have to figure something out and put in some kind of system. Another thing is with these, the nine days of in-person early voting, it starts on, like the Saturday and ends on the Sunday before Election Day, and then Monday is our last day for in-person absentee voting, as well as, and then Tuesday's Election Day. And I, we already do the Saturdays before by law, eight hours before an election date. So there's a lot of hours, and my biggest concern is, those two weeks, I, I won't be living here, which is fine, but I'm really nervous, like, election worker-wise, the uptick and budget-wise for them, because I have to have three election workers at all times. I can't run the in-person early, plus I will--
When are you required to start doing that?
So, so, it's any state, for the nine days, it's any state or federal. So technically, I wouldn't have to do it until 2023. But it makes me worried, in a 2023, a president, or 2024 presidential election, where there's already, eyes are beating down on you, and--
Did you, did you mean to say you don't have to start until 2024?
I don't have to start until 2024. I can leave out the nine days of in-person, but is that going to confuse voters, too, that voted for that, and think they're going to come up, come and vote early?
But do, do they give you the option to, to do a test?
So it doesn't say. Like, it doesn't say. So, the-- There's a lot of questions, and that's, unfortunately, when you have these proposals wrote by the groups, they're not looking, they're not speaking, like, the Clerks Association, the Michigan Clerks, we have a lobbyist. So, we have somebody that speaks on behalf of our clerks in Michigan of things that we want. Like, so the June, the big thing that the clerks are pushing is to move the August primary to June, so that we have enough time in between, because we're still doing audits and recounts, and it's not enough time for us to be prepping for another election. So that's like one big thing, like, it's a very nonpartisan association where we're pushing for the good of the people. Now, with that nine days of in-person, I will have to have cages for the tabulators. They will not be ran at the end of the night. No votes can be told until Election Day at 8:00 PM. So that means tabular, three tabulators at least will have to have cages. I will have to have them in a locked room with myself and maybe one other person knowing the code. And that will be somebody that's deputized under, like, the clerk's office, and somebody who is an accredited election official. So, that's another thing, that we have to, we have to have somebody that's deputized as well, because there's no way that you want two people there. That's a security thing for me. People are already concerned about our tabulators, about election integrity, and now you have this whole thing of, there's just going to be ballots sitting in a tabulator for nine days that we can't touch. So, warning for cost-wise and budget. So, that's another thing. The other, the other big thing that is very concerning to me as a clerk is how I'm going to keep track of this, but this, they haven't given us any guidance on the single sign absentee voter application. One thing in Michigan that I've always loved about absentee voting is that you sign an application, just like you, when you go vote in person, you fill out the application. Absentee voting is the same thing, just on a different piece of paper. So you're telling me that you want a ballot. Well, now, you have to sign one paper, and that's it, and I have to give you a ballot for every election automatically. So with voter registration, it has to be perfect. I mean, you, it's got to be perfect. And if they, if I don't have something coming back saying, and maybe you guys know that somebody moved out, it doesn't matter, I have to send that ballot if I have that application on file. So that's also very concerning to me, is just the security of absentee voting. That was one thing. I, I don't mind the nine days of in-person early voting. I was actually for it, because it gets more people out to vote. And in this day, people are busy, they forget, they don't think about it, they don't want to deal with the lines. But this component of this, I hate. And I, and it's supposed to stick with you, so if you moved to another jurisdiction, I might have a paper on file, but the new clerk is not going to have that. It's just going to show up in your system that you're a permanent AV, and they have to send you a ballot. So that's also worrisome with the same-day registration in Michigan that passed in 2018. It's all very, like, up in the air, and we're going to try our hardest to figure out--
Sounds like it's perfectly set up for fraud, in my opinion.
It's, you know--
Everybody's complained about the fraud. Both parties have always complained about it.
Exactly. And, you know, as, and it's unfortunate that, you know, the clerks are retiring, and they're getting out of their career paths, because this, they're not going to want to, they just don't want to deal with this. Unfortunately, people can be very cruel and say horrible things to you, you know? You guys have known my experience in previous elections that, but what I tell you, we don't do this job because we, we hunt for fraud. We do this job to keep the fraud away. So lots of information I just hit you guys with, I'm sorry. There is a lot more in there, but it's stuff we kind of already do. There is one great thing about this, is the active military voters, they get an extra six days to turn their AV ballot in, which is something the clerks have been pushing for a long time. Because if you're in active duty, how are you going to get to a printer in 45 days if you're actually, I know my brother is a Marine, he was locked in for two weeks at a time, locked in, couldn't, has no access. So, I mean, you have to find a printer and be able to mail that back, and we know how long it takes to get back from overseas. So, that is one component I'm really happy about, that will automatically, when those ballots come in, as long as it's postmarked by Election Day, it will automatically go to the Board of Campusers for them to count and add on. So, yeah. You got any questions?
Let's go back to step one.
Can you give us a rough idea?
You aren't leaving, are you?
Can you give us a rough idea how much it's going to--
Can you give us a rough idea how much it's going to cost?
Uh, the cages and the security is what, um-
Right.
I, I don't know how much cages are. I really don't.
Um- Do you have to have a separate tabulator too? Because it has-
No, because well, I'm, my plan is thinking ahead was I will have my two tabulators at, because I can combine up to six precincts into one place. So precinct one and two will be here with the three election workers. But you're also talking about paying at least three election workers, maybe four, um, all day for at least eight hours a day for nine days straight. Yeah, and they've got to be here early.
It's all time and a half after 42, right?
They don't, I, yeah, I'm going to try and rotate them in and out.
But it is, that's the rule. If you work them over 40 hours.
Yeah.
It's time and a half.
So that's going to be the big budget thing. Obviously we don't have to worry about with mine.
I mean, it stinks, but at the same time, if you can find people who are willing to do that work and show up every day, they deserve to be paid.
So I have an awesome group of election workers, um, a lot of newer ones that came in with me that are more than willing to work. So I'm not worried about finding people. Um, I'm just worried about how much this is going to cost the city that-
Yeah, I mean, that's not the que- I mean-
The state doesn't care.
The state doesn't care and it's unfortunate that-
They won't reimburse you for May though.
They will not, so that's another thing. We did not budget.
How long it'll be before we get the reimbursement?
Yeah. But if we don't have to do it until 24, my suggestion would be to put it off as far as we can into 23 until maybe we can learn more about what they're doing.
I can tell you this, in 2018, when Prop Three passed, we had no idea what we were doing. And we didn't get any guidance until about three weeks before the election.
Really?
Yeah. So that's what I see happening again. And you, thank God, Bering County Clerks Association, the clerks around here, we have like, I mean, I think she said over 600 years experience between all the Bering County clerks, um, at our last meeting. So that's huge. And it's kind of like, you know what, you just got to ride it out. You can't control everything. As it comes in, we'll figure it out.
Who's in charge of making the decision to get stuff out to you, Cala?
For what?
What your guidelines are.
Oh, that would be the state of Michigan, the Bureau of Elections.
So that would be-
The Secretary of State.
Secretary of State?
Mm-hmm.
So we can start writing her letters?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um-
Burn up her phone?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, that's our, that's our hope. And it's unfortunate just because the Bureau of Elections, they are a very awesome group. They, they try extremely hard to keep up with the high demand, but they really need more people in their department. It's unfortunate.
You think?
Yeah. So, yeah.
Well, thanks, Cala. Thank you.
Thank you, Cala.
We're lucky to have you.
You don't need any guidance from us at all, do you?
Nope, I'm just updating you because I'm going to be asking for money at some point, so-
You said you were going to do it, you were going to have to do it by January. So it'd be the second meeting if you're going to ask for a budget adjustment?
Um, well, no matter what, I'm going to have to ask for a budget amendment just because this, um, the schools will pay their price for like the ballot cost and the programming. Um, I believe actually, I think I could charge schools for everything. Just, I don't know when we're going to be, get reimbursed. And even for like the August and November elections, I still haven't gotten any paperwork from the state of Michigan to be reimbursed for, because we get reimbursed for some of our things for that. Um, not like ballot costs or programming, but our postage, our envelopes, I can claim, um, I can claim some of like, because Emma was helping me, I could claim some of her pay. I can't claim mine, but yeah, it's, so we'll, we'll see. Because we did not budget for a May election.
Is there anything we can do about that to stop it or is it already in motion?
It's already in motion.
They're not going to get their money, I can make that statement.
Well, it's the college that's really pushing that. The college is the one that, or LMC is the one pushing it. And so like the local schools can easily jump in on it because it's going to help cost their costs.
So it's LMC, it's not Buchanan High School yet?
Not that, I have not heard for sure. So I have not heard for sure.
But it is LMC because they didn't get it in November.
And the schools are handled by the county, so I have to wait until I get word from them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Cal. Let's move on to unfinished business, appointment of commissioners as alternates to serve on any boards, committees, commissions.
So this one's really just up to commission discretion. If there were any boards that any commissioner wanted to volunteer to serve as an alternate on, I figured you could, you know, sort of make, make that in the form of a motion that you're willing to so serve and go from there.
Well, we had talked about all of us being alternates so that any one of us could be called for any commissioner.
That was my thought, that if you made it known that you were available as an alternate, that you would offer it. I don't think we need to do it per board, but as it, as needed.
That's what I, I mean, is that a possibility?
Is that even-
Can we all just say, I'll be an alternate and then you just, if we can't show up, you call us?
I, I think that would be possible, however procedurally, we would need to have a list of priority to go by. Otherwise, we wouldn't know who to call first and if there was ever a disagreement as to who wanted to serve. That way, there's not a question that arises as to how that would work. Um, did you have a-
And it would all, also be, the alternate would only be for the commission member. So if Mark couldn't be somewhere, you could fill in for him. So that's the other thing. And there was no actual official, like you guys talked about the ZVA with Dan being an alternate, um, but there was no motion made with Dan being an alternate for the ZVA as well.
So do we need to get back to you with a list of, maybe we go through them and ones that we would like to be? Because I don't have those currently in front of me.
That's what I'm thinking, is that if we can get a list of all the committees and then kind of list the ones that we don't, we wouldn't mind being an alternate and maybe we can just figure out-
Can we vote on another one? I just want to postpone this and then until-
I, I mean, I would until, I mean, there's just, there's some board.
There, there's an option. I could perhaps send you gentlemen, um, the doodle polls. I don't know if you've seen those before where you pick dates. You can list order of preference and we could just get a calculation. It says this is the one Mark most wants, Dan most wants, that sort of thing. That might be an easier way to figure that.
We have alternates so we can keep business going and, but I don't think, doing it tonight with nothing in front of us, no.
It'd take too long.
Okay, that, that does sound accurate.
So that's one thing that I, if you guys could, because I, you both decide, I thought you guys decided that Dan was ready to talk me about it for the ZVA. But in the charter, that one has to have an alternate and you don't have anything listed right now.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion right now to make Dan Vianzki the alternate for the ZVA.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Can we roll call?
Johnson.
Well, I mean, the zoning Board of Appeals always has problems and that's why I asked if all of us could show up because the zoning Board of Appeals doesn't have a quorum 90% of the time.
So either with that though, you either all have to be the ZVA or you have one commissioner and alternate, if I remember correctly.
I do believe that's accurate. Because that was one of the options is the, the city commission itself could serve as the ZVA or alternatively you have one-
If you don't have anybody else, all the commissioners have to show up for the ZVA, is that what you're saying?
No, you had to make a choice. Um, your ZVA could either be have individuals appointed to it, one of whom is a commissioner, or you could choose an alternative that the entire city commission is the ZVA also.
Well, I'll second this motion.
Or we're good.
Money?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Okay, it carries.
Thank you. Okay, the microbusiness ordinance.
So previous, um, motion was to pass the first reading of the proposed ordinance, which is an amendment to the Adult Use Micro Business Ordinance to include Class A micro businesses. Um, this is a reflection of newly recently updated state law. This is up for second reading for those unfamiliar with our legislative process. An ordinance to be fully passed has to pass through both a first reading, which provides the public with notice of the consideration of the ordinance. And then to become effective binding law has to pass also at second reading. And then we issue a notice of publication in the local newspaper. So if passed tonight at second reading, it will be an effective ordinance of the city of Buchanan, taking effect after publication.
I'll make that.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make it. You want me to read it?
I move to approve the second reading of ordinance 2022 12 dash 435.
Is there support?
No support.
Thank you. Can we roll call please?
Weeden?
Yes.
Vianzki?
Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. Someone like to make a motion to interclose session?
Sean, I'll make the motion to interclose session pursuant to MC 15.268, section eight, one D, to discuss the potential lease or purchase of real property.
Thank you, is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Can we roll call?
Vianzki?
Yep.
Money?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Interclose.
Thank you.
Who knows how long we'll be back there, folks?
Did you bring the staff cigars?
I volunteered at the very first meeting I ever attended.
You dropped them off? Yeah.
All right, listen, what I was going to tell you is in March, you know, you're crazy tired and I think you need to go home.
I- Well, the literal apocalypse happened over the weekend. We did a lot of, we did a lot of. My plan was to not work the rest of the week.
What, so what's next? I guess I'm not even sure what, uh, so they go back there.
They take action.
All right, no, I'll take a break. Your thought, my thought.
That's why we get somebody for hotels and you, yes. And you just surprise, what that is, I, I would be surprised.
I have seen it.
I'd say, we're giving you cookies.
Nobody is coming down.
I'm running now, I got my first parking ticket.
Well, there you go.
Nice.
I knew you could only be down there for three hours. I had no idea you could be down there at night.
No, you can't be down there after 2:30, park it there after 2:30.
Real night, man, for it.
You're welcome, Red. It was probably me that got you that ticket. I mean, by snow, doggy.
It's a bitch right there. Yeah, all right.
Hey, if we were plowing, if it was, if there was snow on the ground and I was supposed to be coming in, I, I got you, buddy. I got you.
Right, that's all right. I was like, everything's going pretty good now? So forth. Absolutely. At every turn, across over very briefly, but there's still, I mean, just, just after that.
Just got to have that patience.
Sure, right, yeah. Trying to just do the right thing. Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
No, we want to build a dome. Right.
You know, right, well, you never dunk. Dunk for summer, you know, even a weekend, a weekend of like, this is done, I'd say, would be quite changing.
Weekend of celebration and then you're going to find something.
Yeah, I could, I could, I could. See for a moment, it's, no.
That's definitely a lot of work.
A lot of the same, right?
Yeah.
And now I never want to do it. See, I don't know, I don't want to do it like I was first time. Oh, you don't want to do that? I'm done with that. Yeah.
Well, good. Down there, see something.
I'm not, yeah. What am I going to tell you?
Are you going to answer?
Yeah. Probably, hey, you've been with the fire department, you've been in the fire department. No, I'm not going to give you some letters. Follow, you've been working like I was and whatever, he's got you. Okay. Yeah, guy's been, right. Yeah. Yeah. And the fire inspector, he's been with us. Something, something, we might just back and I'm like, you know, something like that. Prison for, or, 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 city election. Yeah. A certain would say enough for all these years to operate. So, and I'm making a bunch of different change. Sure, guy pointed out, so they're going to want to see this. I'm like, okay, guys.
Exactly. So guy kind of already knows, you know, those kind of things. And the fire department has been committed in church state. Yep. That's it. So here, when that get like, we get up and running. These are all the, all the, they'll get through there. Time to go walk through, there's a video, like, or at least part of the video of myself. I just want to tell you, yeah, cool. Video and picture.
I'll, I'll, I'll have to, I don't like to get your camera. No, not yet. I was actually going to ask you something about what the exact requirement is. I know that I do need to have alarms. Do you have any recommendations?
I really don't. There is a lot next to the building.
How do you, like a local retailer? Because I haven't gotten to it, you know? And I'm going to, I'm going to, I think I'm going to do the cameras myself. It's like, I find radio tower, I can roll those here. So I, I start running cable and stuff like that. Basically, I just need to have terrified some of the data saved. And I just keep it on site. Somebody should come and ask for it again.
I'm glad we can-
So I think I should do that myself and meet that department with the alarm system. It needs to be live on there and then somehow go to wish.
Yeah, so, you know, that's our, yeah.
So if you get that, one of the things we do want to have is your information. So, you know, our guys are all like, I'll check with them, find them out. But what we do have in the margin, we need to reach out to you, make sure, and, uh, sure.
Every, then he went all the way to the house. So if you find the correct door or something, that was not right. It's, I mean, people, they all do it.
And I break news, buddy.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
Hey, you can even store, you know? I don't sound like something that I would do. Come down and take a look at them.
So, so it's always nice to have that information. If you, if you're a wire, then, um, on the, this is-
Wires, and, and those, that business is, we're, 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 so.
We're lying.
And that's another, if you always, we get the cameras out, okay, and, and that, and you're going to have outside cameras, see what's up, you know? That's another thing, we get cameras out, okay, and get that, and you're gonna have outside cameras, see what's up, you know? You capture, well, right there, you know, if you're gonna have some of the part of the oak tree, you have an issue, you might be not getting any from here. You're allowing each camera, you know, to capture, and then you take the intersection or something. And I know a lot of places want to take care of themselves, and I did that, so it's closed, because it does this stuff. It captures IIP or the intersection. Well, my heat is good, but the rest of it is... Yeah, because, uh, a lot of times we go to the echoes and cylinders and not my bad. Video or something that happened right outside your place. Oh, your line. Yeah, so you've done a lot, that's good. Good to hear. Oh, yeah, last year. Twenty-twenty-one, man. No, and that's my fault, because that was, that was, I mean, not understanding the construction process. I thought that I would be everything, but now that it's released and proved, I have, I have seen force call, I have spread, I have explained everything. Actually, it's pretty far along. I might be able to build my smallest building on property first. And then continue, you know, to the worst of that, that's... So, I then with the largest swath of area where they could... But that was, that was surprising. Say, yeah, we were, we were, I had a little bit of a break, I had, I was a little off, but I heavily thought, it's like, yeah, a month from now, it'll be... This is gonna be great. But no, there's so, 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 so much more involved, and that's okay. Yeah. Yeah. Well, just break you and just give you... What else now? Wake up. I know. It's crazy, but... What an experience. It is. It is. And that, you know, I, I wish that was, that was important, because we got some interesting stuff to come up here and do. Actually, what I'd like, absolutely, I've got a tree friend planting a tree in a rock car. No, but I just don't like, she was so rough there, that I was like...
They're not mine. They're not mine. I don't want things that are mine.
Got guy and friends?
No, we just moved to town.
Cool. Yeah. So you, are you originally from, you know, hiring mine? No, I wish. Um, I grew up in Chicago, downtown Chicago, Villas Park. It didn't take very long. There, if they come back, I'll shut up. I, I grew up in, uh, in, um, Lumbria. My father ran, his father ran a lot. They had Spurla, Iowa, Tom, and Robert. All lumber, came working there. And then as that came, plus the Iowa, too. They also ordered a metro station in Fort Hills Park. Well, fast forward to, I would have just been starting high school, and for years, mentor was trying to campfire property. Went through the legal channel, tried to defend that, to protect the generation. We did that. Our house was part of the parcel problem, so it's very much, but... Don't learn my lesson, you know, that's exactly what I was trying to set up now, is I hope, I wouldn't do, want to constantly be where you were at all times, you know? So I've learned nothing from that experience. Long story short, I believe we are done last unless there's been a war mess or a phase of, I mean, driving in this country by way of rent. So we forfeited our property to the greater city of Chicago, so that they, they increased their, here, a lot. And so everything I ever knew became a paved lot. Yeah, which disrupted all my plans, because I was, you know, growing up in that, never looked more certain that you were going to want to own. Then you had to upgrade every piece of equipment. Four plus, I was always that little kid that people, you know, coming with the... He's nine. You know, he's nine, right? Like, yeah, no problem. I won't scratch your shop, I've been doing this. I'm very high, I'm very high on here. Tire, oil, all of that stuff. And I learned a lot, not how we, this was, you know... That was much right here. Basic understanding of all theoretical education and test. But as not here to help you with any of that either, because there in California. So, so that's very cool. Next thing, so, as newly minted, one millionaires, um, because they have to, you know, even though there's evidence, they'll maybe give you some money, but it's just lower than the fair value of the property. We lost, we lost our court phase, lost our whole, whatever, five mine. So they had a house right near beach, in Huntington Beach, California, you know? Dream, so I was gonna start my school there, but hated it, and honest times, you realize that, that, um, that's a time in a young man's life where it just hates, everything is unsatisfied. And that'd be for whatever reason, it's just like, this kind of old girl's going on, it's like, this is absolute paradise, I don't know anybody. I wish I was back in Illinois, I said, this city is just not making the best of it, you know? For a period, I caught my stride, and it's like, oh, hey. Sunshine. You know, yeah, there's, there's not a lot to complain about, with the exception of, they got, they built a house that was poor, spent, they put the order money that they never had, and then had no business. They decided they'd try real estate. Very poor time to try real estate, because that was, they hit, and the housing market collapsed. So they managed to spend all this time, because I'd never seen them in these clothes, they got pants closed, they had suit on, they're gonna be renewsers, and so beachfront property, well, they're sold, and they go beachfront properties. And in fact, when that collapse happened, they lost their clothes house, and those cars, and the fancy clothes, and all of it. And that's how I started to learn how to grow plants that I grow, and I've been supporting my folks ever since with it. And I applied to get a small amount of property incorporated to Los Angeles County, and because of the town, town made their own ordinance, we were locked inside the lawn, inside, you know, the campus, it's a room right there. I lived in Long Beach for many years, so I ended the requirement there, so we controlled, um, whether we could use it. So I, I just, I overextended myself once again to get a, get a facility down there, in the area of town that I wanted to want to be in, to the industrial district. Once again, led through a big work process, and it's a lot. They ruled that on its extension, but I didn't, I couldn't control the building any longer, do nothing with it. If it needs to be functional as that, I wasn't, you know, that, that was not a property that we, we do, we do with a different business, which I know who wants to start building. Anyway, long story short, that didn't go very well either. So, no, it gets good. It changes for the better. There's, there's one more, fuck, I can call, just have. So... I'm climbing radio towers, and I fought at work, um, but the man that owned the company had just sold that, that was really great, from he's, he's why I started joining him, was the father of my girlfriend. I was fighting him, and he had just sold the company to a larger entity, and so I thought, I'll kill. That man involved me, he taught me more about, you know, my folks were wrong, so they didn't teach me a whole lot. That man showed me, you know, business, how it come from, family, I admire, I still admire him above everyone, and he really, he was, kind of, as far as people have had a great, great job. Anyway, he sold his business to this other company, I couldn't, you know, just put it, I just took my legs and was like, all right, cool, I'm injured, for sure, I messed up my back, whatever. Luckily, that heal, I did a bunch of physical therapy and stuff like that, and that was the end of it. I never made it, I never even raised a snake about or anything, just kind of went away from that. But at the same time, almost looks like I like, what did it was accidents, I thought, jeez, this no longer brings me joy. I feel like this isn't where I'm meant to be, I kind of want to go home, because I still always felt that in my heart, that, you know, even though I really enjoyed California, so, things, it was not like the beach and sunshine and... I was from Illinois, I brought out, go home, and Chicago, Chicago, one more time. I did it, damn it, I just, you know, I just kind of freaked out, decided to give all of my stuff, came in just a car, and I had my truck, sold all my stuff, never did, just came in the car. And then slowly brought out, when my mother does, brought out one of my mother's, I suppose, my brother here, so now I got, got a party down there too, from California, yeah. Yeah, exited along the way, really, had been sitting there on the property for a couple of years, and it's an off take in the sun, and I got that, you know? So I got a little mechanic under my belt too now, you know, another, another teacher who I like to experience. But the long story short of that is, there was a girl that I've been with since I was... And I have yearbooks, she has, I should say she has the yearbooks, I always, I mean, I told her from my sister, the very first yearbook, we were, you know, we were separated together, it was like, who am I to love? I was so, I think you're so great. Idiot, really shooting a shot like way above, you know, long story short, me and my girl are together now, and I couldn't get back. So I got there, yeah, wait, 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 go back downhill a little bit more, and then, and then we get here, and then now. Did you, did you prepare this speech before you got here? No, no, so, uh, so the rolling folks are over there. No, well, Chicago is gonna have adult use, just like everywhere, just like has happened everything in every state, right? So, same thing, I got there, day one, program, I mean, everything, I watched Lori Lightfoot speak in front of everybody, I went to the convention, and naively again, put my chips in, because they charge you to apply. It's not just like, it's like, oh, would you like to apply? Here, just fill out this form, it's like, oh, this form, take D, do this stuff, get a building, do all this, so I did, I had a building right there on Michigan, right in other road. I was at the convention center, you know, just being sponsored, great building, you know, like, only, we still talk all the time, you know? Christmas, because we decided up becoming, you know, what I want to do, I'm such an idiot, what else are you gonna do if you're trying to... No one else is dumb enough to even... Missed places of hazard, um... And, yeah. I don't wanna, uh, speak ill of my fellow man, but boy, that's the, they were the, uh, little play that they did there, they kind of figured out who was gonna do it for, because even something that they both be done. Which I wish I'd known that, I wish anyone could have... I got an attorney, and that attorney helped me find Ken. Red State.
Thanks for staying.
Your eyes got ten big round.
Oh, yeah.
Fighting, fighting, it was just that one year though.
You know, right.
Sean. Sean, I'll make a motion to return to open session.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Thank you. Can we roll call?
Moe?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yep.
We're open.
Okay. Someone like to make the next one?
Yeah, Sean, I'll make a motion to authorize the city administration to take action pursuant to the discussions held in closed session.
Thank you. Is there support?
This is money, I'll support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yep.
Moe?
Yes.
Thank you. Communications.
So in the packets that were shared publicly, there is, um, there are two maps listed, one for sewer road right of way, one for water infrastructure road right of way. They're merely shared for informational purposes and no actions needed. And then the second item under communications is just an update on a previous agenda item to indicate that Andy Campbell has stated he will not be ready to present his information relating to water sewer rate proposals slash the USDA project until our January meeting, which will be on the ninth, if I'm not mistaken. And similarly, the city credit card policies are planned to be presented at that same time as well.
So now on the water and sewer, are we gonna have any input on that before the next meeting? I mean, is he gonna reach out to us?
Um, he indicated to me that he'll have the materials ready before the meeting, so they can go out in the packets, and that he'll be available to answer questions.
Okay, great.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, time for public comment on non-agenda items. If you'd like to make a public comment, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the minutes. You're good?
Yeah, I was just saying.
Got it off your chest.
Okay, seeing none, let's move on to executive comments, city manager comments.
Um, so I want to just share that I had a wonderful holiday, I hope everyone did as well, and I'm very pleased that we had such a, I think, uplifting meeting this evening. It's so amazing to see such accomplishment from our staff, but also such accomplishment from our business owners and our community as a whole, coming together and aiming for, uh, great things in Buchanan. So thank you, everybody. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Weeden?
I'm good.
Commissioner Yasi?
Me?
Comments?
No, I've said enough tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moe?
I'll always, I'll always have something to say. First off, you know, I want, I'll always thank this commission for what they do. Reiterating what manager Grace said, you know, we conduct a lot of business, we got a lot of things done. Uh, want to thank Mr. Baker back there for the great work that his crew has done, uh, in the city of Buchanan, to take care of our streets, and, uh, when all of this blizzard hit and everybody was in a panic, and, um... So just every, just everything that you, you and your guys have done, go back and tell your guys, I would truly appreciate it, and I want to say thank you for fixing this nail right here, because I haven't caught my hand on it once. Uh, I was gonna thank Jen. I was gonna thank Jen for the cookies, but she took her cookies and left, so... Did she?
Yeah, I asked her.
Oh, that's funny.
All right, because I told her I wanted one, but I didn't want to eat it up here.
You always gotta leave...
That's all I've got.
You gotta leave Santa's cookies, right?
Uh, I don't really have any comments. I would, I want to thank the city staff for all their hard work, and, um, that's all I got. Tonight, I'm tired, I want to go home.
I'll make a motion to adjourn then.
I'll support. He flipped it on us, look at that.
Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Weeden?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Moe?
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
No, but, but he flipped it.
You read it off!
He flipped it, because it's not only me, it's, you see now...
Four years, but she went for one, but she had cancer, so it's always something on top of my money, but I owed her a lot after, I mean, I had to take her to I U.
By walking over your grave, or what?
Tried to do it, it's tough, man, and he went in there to come up and talk to me, he says, I owe her.
Am I? I was ready, though.